The notes, Nancy, if you use them as they're written, please verify by raising your right hand. All opposed, saying motion carried. Thank you. Now, we'll go back to the minutes as they were written, and are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll take the motion to approve those together. So Marshall has made the motion. Do I have a second? Lane Frybarger has made the second, so for discussion.
Is that for both?
Yes, it is. Seeing nothing of discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor of adopting the minutes for January and for December, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. All right. We'll go into full business, and we have today with us Professor Al Heber from Purdue University, and we also, the way our agenda's all set up there, so we have review of the land of ordinance with Kelly Steele. Then since we've got equipment, you know, to be moved around and stuff, we're going to defer back to Dr. Heber to bring your presentation, if you will. So I'll introduce Dr. Heber, and since he is bringing us data relating to what we had previously had last week, I've allowed him 30 minutes.
Thank you very much, members of the finance committee and members of the public. My name is Al Heber, Professor of Agricultural and Biological Engineering at Purdue University, where I've been since 1993. Before that, I was at Kansas State University for nine years. My presentation will include the topics of air quality in general, and the research that's been done, the National Air Emission Monitoring Study, and odor characteristics, and the use of setback models for livestock facilities. At a livestock facility, there are several sources of air pollution, including the buildings, the waste storage, land application, feed storage, and mortalities. And with each of these, we have issues, potential issues of neighborhood nuisance, animal and human health concerns, compliance with regulations, in some cases, there's haze and deposition. The pollutants that are derived from livestock facilities include odor, which is up the top of the list for a reason, because it affect, depending on distance, it is probably the most prevalent issue that has to be dealt with across the country. Ammonia, which is not a big problem with dairy, dairy, but it's higher in poultry. Hydrogen sulfide, which is higher with liquid systems, deep pits, as compared with solid systems, as you would have in turkeys and broilers. Particulate matter, greenhouse gases, volatile organic compounds and pathogens. So there's questions on each one of these. How bad is it to someone's health? How bad is it to have this pollutant? And then how much is emitted from a farm? That was a big question that EPA certainly didn't have a lot of good data on. And then, once it gets emitted from the farm, how far does it go? What is the impact? And if there is an issue, what could be done about it? Ammonia, I just want to point out that ammonia is released from manure decomposition, it's attracted to water, it's, inside the livestock barns is where it is, can be a daily nuisance at some really, really high levels that you'll never see on a farm. I mean, at 5,000 ppm, it's deadly. But the typical levels are five to 50 parts per million, so to get a little perspective, you can detect it, some people can detect it with their nose at three to five ppm. Your eyes will start watering and burning at 20 to 25 ppm. Now, here are some concentrations measured at a deep pit finishing house over a period of almost a year, and these are daily averages, so you can see that it varies a lot, and it varies from low in the summertime of around two to three, or one to three parts per million, all the way up to in the wintertime, 25 parts per million. And those would be situations where your eyes might be watering and so on. You could compare that to the odor threshold. Hydrogen sulfide is also released by manure decomposition. It causes the black deposits on iron, it has some of these effects. If it's in liquid manure, it actually stores in little bubbles, so if you agitate it, it gets relieved, so that's an issue. You've got to be careful about that, farmers do. And it's typically, though, well, if we look at one breath of 1,000 ppm of hydrogen sulfide will kill you. Other symptoms occur vomiting, nausea, and so on, 50 to 200 parts per million. The OSHA eight-hour threshold is 10 parts per million. You can smell that rotten egg at less than one, and typically, in buildings, it's .01 to .5 ppm. And when you flush a shallow pit in a pig barn with lagoon water, it can release that H2S in the barn, so the barn becomes an off-gassing facility for the lagoon, and we saw that here. You can see the peaks of hydrogen sulfide. Not that it went very high, these are parts per billion, and it's still only less than, really less than a part per million peaks. So these are relatively small peaks, but it starts off pretty small in the first place. And then, over the course of time, as the pigs grow, you can see those cycles over a period of almost a year there, the hydrogen sulfide picks up as the manure fills the pit, and the pigs are getting larger and producing more manure. And the average exhaust hydrogen sulfide, in this case, was 98 parts per billion, this is a flushing. Now, with the deep pits, it'll be a little higher than that. Now, the ambient with H2S coming in was five ppb, so it's about 5% of what's going out. Now, that ambient, we call it ambient in our studies and our reports, that's ambient to the house. It's not ambient out in the countryside. It's just ambient or the inlet concentration. There's been some confusion about that term. The Minnesota Air Pollution Control Agency has a rule for property line H2S concentrations, and if there are complaints, they will come out with a portable H2S monitor, and if it hits 50 ppb, then they'll bring out a monitor that can stay there for like five months and monitor continuously. And I was told that this, they hardly ever needed to come out with their instruments. This was the worst case, and it was a very large facility in a lagoon, a problem lagoon, and they were forced to do something by the Minnesota Air Pollution Control Agency. But these monitors were set up at the property line. They're pretty close to the facility. Also, on the left-hand side, you'll see just how high these concentrations were. They were only, were all less than .1 ppm. These are ppb values. And it is interesting to know, another piece of science that's been published is that we can measure these kind of concentrations in our own breath, as we exhale. In fact, dental, the dental industry uses a hydrogen sulfide meter to evaluate that breath, by the amount of hydrogen sulfide that's in the breath. The odor threshold is real, is only, well, it says 1 ppb. It gets to be annoying at about 30 ppb, so you can see at the property line, there's some annoying odor levels at this farm. Particulate matter, the nuisance dust, if you just had dust that wasn't, didn't have any bacteria in it or anything, it would be about 15 milligrams per ppb. Typical levels in a hog house is .5 to 1. Now, here are some of the issues that face producers. The first wave of action maybe against producer can be citizens' odor nuisance suits, and that's where the neighbors will seek for damages, and maybe ask to close the operation, maybe get a court order to abate the odor, that the facility has to abate the odor. Some very landmark cases, landmark cases in Ohio was Buckeye Egg Farm, where they were sued, sued by citizens, and also Missouri, where there was a very large multi-plaintive lawsuit against Premium Standard Farms. Then, the state can get involved with their own, their lawsuits. This is not citizens, this is the state. And with these same farms, Missouri sued Premium Standard Farms for odor and other things, and some huge fines, some abatement technology that they needed to develop. And then in Ohio, Buckeye Egg Farms had, had to do some of the same things, a million-dollar fine, they had to convert some of their barns from deep pit to belt and so on. And then the state, you know, they can sue, but they can, they also have regulations, and there are some regulations out there. They can be indirect or direct. Indirect regulations are to get a permit, or to have a setback, so many feet, to require the operators to have, to be certified through some operator training, or to have restrictions on land applications, so that they have to inject, for example. Some direct regulations, there's about 10 states, about 10 years ago, there were 10 states that have property line limits using a field of factometer, we have a picture of it there on the slide, where the readings have to be two to eight dilution of the threshold, or gas concentration, and I've already mentioned Minnesota that has a property line measure, a threshold for that. And then lawsuits and consent decrees can result if there are some violations. Now, the federal government has gotten, gotten involved in air quality. Now, they don't regulate odor, but they do have the Clean Air Act to enforce, and so they, about 10, 12 years ago, they got involved in suing Premium Standard Farm, joining the citizens and the state, and they were, that resulted in an air consent agreement, or air consent decree, where they actually had to do some monitoring to find out whether they were exceeding the Clean Air Act. With all the monitoring that was done, and I was the director of that project, they, they, they in turn, turned out that they did not exceed the Clean Air Act, but they still had to test oil sprinkling and some other things. Now, Buckeye Egg Farms in Ohio also was, resulted in an air consent decree with the federal government. They had to pay a penalty, and they had to do a bunch of tests, which I did as well. And they, see, some brief summer tests showed that they, done by someone else, had shown that they were exceeding the Clean Air Act, but when we did our test and showed year-round, when the fans were shut down in the wintertime and so on, it did not. The federal regulations, besides the Clean Air Act, they have the community right to know laws like EPCRA, where, and that covers ammonia and hydrogen sulfide, where the 100 pounds per day, if the facility missing more than 100 pounds per day, they need to report. And the CAPO, this only applies to CAPOs, and which is defined by these numbers by the federal government. So, broilers, 30,000 for liquid manure. I think that would be liquid manure, solid manure, 125,000. All right, so there's several ways to increase our knowledge about emissions, because it's not a trivial task. We got involved with this. EPA made these lawsuits, but they didn't really have good data. How do we increase our understanding? Well, laboratory studies. My former graduate student did a laboratory study showing the top picture of learning how biofilters work, and Dr. Ni and myself in my lab directed some very large studies on baseline emissions, to actually do field studies, to measure what's coming out. My graduate student, my current graduate student, Wei Zhenliang, right here, is working on an emission model for layer farms, layer farms, ammonia emission model. Now, regulatory models are another way that we can try to understand, but as I said there, regulatory models are often shaped by untimely political and societal pressures. Maybe, for example, there are societal pressures to do something, and so something needs to be done now, and, you know, when I was talking to a planning member from another county many years ago, and it was on, it was on New Year's Eve, and he was calling me because there was a meeting coming up, and off the top of my head, I myself, and I gave him a number, and that, that number ended up in the ordinance, so I was really surprised by that. But anyway, regulatory models are also marked by simplicity, unfairness, arbitrariness, and inaccuracy. However, we as researchers would hope that maybe the science that we are trying to get can have some influence. And we had been working on air quality for quite some time. The Europeans did a lot of work, and then we started, there's about 11, 11 projects here that Purdue is involved with. The little lightning strike shows the Premium Standard Farm study, because that's a legal thing. You'll see NASA got involved with some air spacecraft, IAQ, that I was also involved with, but we used a mobile lab approach, and this is from 1992 to 2004, this is before the National Air Emission Monitoring Study, but was this experience that was the reason why they asked me to lead it. The EPA provided, this was actually port barrel money, or Washington Project to Purdue, and it turned out that this study at a layer farm north of a campus turned out to be a pilot test for a subsequent six-state study, and this shows that six-state study called the Eight Cap Project. We worked with five other universities, and we each had a mobile lab, and we did this, these measurements for like 15 months. And also, in 2004, Purdue University finally built a air quality-based environmental research building for swine. Well, from 2004 to 2016, there's about five studies, but they're much larger. The one in the middle, right here, is the National Air Emission Monitoring Study. This one shows the Ohio study, which is a legal case, measurements that were required by the consent decree, but this is the big one. Government agencies needed that data, livestock producers needed more time, and that was the basis for an air consent agreement that was announced January 2005. So EPA said, okay, you guys pay a penalty, small penalty, and then you also, but you also have to fund a study, just like in the consent decrees, where Premium Standard Farms had to pay for the study, and so did Buckeye Eggs. Likewise, in the air consent agreement, which is not forced upon them, but it was voluntary, they still have to pay a little penalty, and they also have to fund the study. So they paid for it. And so this, this is what was required. We had a meeting in November 2003 to finalize the approach. It's overseen by the US EPA. It's funded by the producers. Turkey, ducks, and beef cattle groups decided not to participate in this. This study and its results were grossly misrepresented in a report by Environmental Integrity Project in March 2010, and that's the report you saw in your last meeting, the report that was cited in the presentation to you. And it was a very irresponsible presentation by the Environmental Integrity Project. They posted a, their report in March of 2010. The objectives of the names were to quantify air emissions from livestock production, to provide reliable data for developing models, and to develop a national consensus on methods. Lots of pollutants. There's 11 pollutants altogether, when you add, when you consider that we also measure nitrous oxide, which is that laughing gas, odor and pathogens on top of those that were required by the names. 35 barns, 78 standard operating procedures, 15 site monitoring plans, and so on. We have onsite audits and so on. But this was a comprehensive and continuous, real-time emission data monitoring effort for two years in each of these barns, measuring all these things. We also measured airflow and weather. We took some integrated, some spot measurements, and we measured the concentration that the barn air inlets and the outlets, and then subtracted the inlet, so we didn't, so the, so the producers weren't charged twice for some of the same molecules. We also collected as much metadata, farm information, yield information, feed, when the feeders were operating, when the lights were on, and so on. Everything we could think of could afford. There were 2,300 sensors and 2.45 billion data points collected in the study. Now, the general timeline, we all started this in 2004, finally signed the contract 2007, collected the data 2008, 2009, presented the data to EPA. EPA was going to have 18 months to analyze it. They'd taken a little longer than what they thought they were going to, and so they're still working on it, and I, last I heard, was that they thought it would take a couple more years. So it's taking a long time. But we're publishing. We published our first journal article from the study in 2009, then two the next year, three the next year, this last year, we published 14, and we hope to do about 24 this coming year. So the data is getting out, even though EPA's taking longer than they thought they would. The, the project was administered by Purdue, and we collaborated with all these universities, and they're open source, open areas also monitoring. Add-on studies were mostly on odor and greenhouse gases. This is our gas sampling system, a little schematic there, but this shows the summary of the named sites. We had 16 swine barns, 12 dairy barns, eight layer barns, and two broilers, for a total of 35, it looks like, or 38. And then we have six lagoons and swine, and four manure storages and dairy. Now, one of the charges by this report that was cited last time was that the industry-funded names was tainted, and it had to be biased, because the industry funded it. Well, these tests are always funded by the industry, when there's a consent decree or an agreement. And what happened was, there was a nonprofit organization called AARC. They took the money from the producers, and that's who I, I worked with. That was my sponsor. But the only thing they did was they addressed budget and deadlines, and EPA addressed all the data quality issues. We followed the protocols that were reviewed, and we used past studies and proven methods wherever possible, and the PIs maintained independence and neutrality. Purdue University was the independent monitoring contractor, and I've always been independent in my, in my research. Another problem that they saw in this report, they saw some negative concentration that really bothered them a lot. Well, gas analyzers do have noise, and we did some adjustments on calibration such that if the concentrations are zero, you're going to see some negative, it's going to bounce around, negative, positive, negative, positive, but on the average, it will be zero. And so these negative concentrations were very slight, and we explained this to EPA. We explained this to their large science advisory panel that was formed a couple years ago, or a year and a half ago, and they all agreed. They understand why. They, they accepted my explanation as to why you see some slight negative concentrations. Also, they looked at the data, they didn't ask me for any clarification, they just wrote their report. They looked at the barn inlet data, and they said, that is what neighbors are exposed to. Well, that's not the case, because the inlet area was just a few feet, a couple feet away, or maybe right in the inlet to the barn, and that, that was surrounded by other barns, and so you're going to have some elevated inlet concentration, especially with the wind blowing in certain direction. They, of course, the report picked out some of the maximums they could see. We should not compare those inlet air concentrations to the national ambient air quality standards or other thresholds intended to protect the community. It's very important to understand that. Otherwise, you're going to misrepresent the study, and that's what, what happened. Here's an example. The inlet concentrations were measured right here, because my light's not looking, but you see the inlet concentration there in the middle of this large complex. You can imagine that there's going to be some elevated concentrations, whereas the ambient concentration would be not only where it's shown there, but way off somewhere else, far away from any sources. Also, they looked at the exhaust concentration, and they said, the report said, this is what the, the people working in there and the animals and birds are exposed to. That's not true. A layer barn, all the birds are upstairs. The air comes in the attic, falls through, comes through the cages, goes down into the pit, and then is exhausted. And the concentrations increase a lot going through the pit where there are no birds, but we measured the exhaust, and they said that is what the birds are exposed to. A gross misrepresentation. Also, in a broader facility, that is tunnel ventilated, the air comes in fresh, and then finally, when it goes out the other end, that it's maximum. We measured the maximum, and they said that's what all the birds are exposed to. That's not true. Maybe an average would be a lot less than the max. And so here's an example of one of our setups. This is actually pretty names, but it shows that we measure the concentration coming in right there. Measure the concentration here, and we measure it here going out. And so there's the inlet, there's the outlet, and we subtract, see this right here, the subtraction, 17, we get the 17 on the exhaust, and this two, we got here on the inlet, we subtract the, the inlet from the exhaust, and then take that times our, the difference times the airflow, and that's how we calculate the emissions. So, so this calculation, sometimes, if you have very low emissions, and you have the wind blowing something from another barn, you might get some high concentrations at the inlet momentarily, or maybe for a few hours. And that concentration will be higher than what's coming out of the barn, so now we calculated negative emissions. That bothered the people that wrote this report. EPA and their science advisory panel totally understand after I explained it to them last March. If we, if we didn't include these negative emissions calculations into the average, then we would be overestimating the emissions. The same thing happens at high concentrate, at high emissions, and we don't, we won't know it, because, you know, it's only low emissions where we get a negative sign, which is sort of a flag for those who don't quite understand. So we did not measure neighbor exposure. We didn't do any downwind measurements. We didn't measure the worker animal exposure, and we didn't remove these negative concentrations or negative emissions for reasons that I don't have time to go into here, but are fully accepted by the EPA and their science advisory panel. So the short-term negative emissions were not removed. There is noisiness, and there's a lot of reasons. I guess we're going to run out of time if I try to go into the details. Net emissions, outlet minus inlet, does not underestimate the emissions. If I didn't subtract the background going into the barn, I'd overestimate the emissions, so that's why we did that. And you can see what would happen if you have an inlet air, exhaust fans, if the air's, if the wind is blowing this way, it'll take some of that exhaust air from barns five, three, four, and five, and blow it across the inlet air measurement for barns 10 and 12. That would be an example where I could get some elevated inlets. And if the barn is empty, or it's a, it's a pollutant that's not generated very much, I could actually get a negative emission for a short term. Okay, and then in this case, the air is not blowing across any fans, and it could be more fresh than what it would be otherwise, and in this case, I'd, I'd have a little momentary too high. But if I average this over a long period of time, we measure for 10, two years, all these variations will wash out. They also, they also said greater resolution may, would give you better, better information than this, these daily means. Well, to answer that, we are providing one-hour means to EPA after, after these reports were submitted in 2010. We're still in the process of doing that, trying to stay ahead of them as they're developing the, their methodologies. And there's other reasons here why greater resolution doesn't necessarily give you better information. Here's some pictures of the study, as we acquired the equipment, and we have our data acquisition here, and gas sampling, and we measured the weather, brought all the trailers that have to Purdue, and outfitted them, and then sent them out, delivered them all over the country. This is the broiler facility. These are the two, two houses in the, the mobile lab, or it's not really mobile, it's mobile, it's got wheels, but it's stationary throughout the study. And here are some of the instruments we use to measure gas and dust, and these are some of the sensors we use to monitor the fan airflow. Some people ask, how big were the farms? Well, this is the answer. The three-stall barns had from 275 to 800 cows. The layer houses had 38,000 to 250,000 hens. The finishing barns had 880 to 1,000 hogs each, and the sow farms were 2,000 to 2,800 sow operations. And the broiler houses had 21,000 chickens in each. The broiler site was located in California, and this is the monitoring plan shown. It's a tunnel ventilated, air comes in one end and goes out the other. The layer sites were located in California, Indiana, and North Carolina. And here's the, I'm just going to show you the Indiana sites. This is two high-rise facilities with about 110 fans in each, in each house, which was a lot of pressure to monitor, lots of Teflon lines and which was a lot of pressure to monitor, lots of Teflon lines and cable. But this is, this is, these are the results actually and showing the number of hens that would produce that a hundred pounds per day of ammonia, a hundred pounds per day. So in California, the broiler facility would need almost ninety thousand birds to generate the hundred pounds a day. Uh, here's EPA's previous estimate. Uh, this is the Indiana belt battery and then these are the high-rise facilities, anywhere from forty thousand to eighty thousand. So most layer facilities are bigger than that, so they're gonna have to report their ammonia. And for particulate matter, see how many birds are required to exceed that Clean Air Act threshold? Uh, about almost fifteen million in California broilers. And then upwards, way higher than any facility I know about. So the Clean Air Act is really off the radar in terms of particulate matter. Swine barn sites were located in Oklahoma, Indiana, Iowa and North Carolina. So three sow farms, two finishing sites. This is the finisher site up in Carroll County. Uh, it was a one quad, a double quad system. Here's the sow facility in Iowa. And here are the results for swine. We had for ammonia, uh, it took nineteen hundred and sixty sows to generate the hundred pounds per day or six thousand hogs. Now for hydro sulfide, eighty-one thousand six hundred, these are deep pits, eighty-one thousand six hundred pigs. And there are some facilities that are that big. Now Iowa's sow site had sulfur in the water, which created a lot of hydro sulfide emissions. So that's why we have the asterisk there. Whole log system, you have different numbers for, for that. So these are some of the results that we got. Now for dairy, uh, they were located in Washington, California, Wisconsin, New York and Indiana. And we also monitored some lagoons, we also monitored the Corral down in Texas. This is the site in Indiana up near Faroe, one of those farms. And we, it was a very large facility, tunnel ventilated. And of all the five sites, this is our result. The California data is not very reliable for various reasons, but these are very reliable, very comparable. So eight hundred to twelve hundred cows would generate that hundred pounds per day of ammonia. Now, do you have any questions at this point or should I just keep going?
Just keep going.
All right, now I wanna talk about, talk about odor. Yes.
Is all your, is all your tests made on a daily, of the whole year?
Every day.
You're showing different areas, but like temperature.
Yes.
Does that make a difference, summer, winter, spring?
Yes, it does.
Is that combined into the average or?
This is the overall average. And we're writing all these papers where we break it out hour by hour, the effective time of day, the effect of molting of the birds on ammonia emission, we get into great detail. Because we've monitored continuously, we have a lot of rich information about dynamics of emissions. All right, now emissions are just concentration. Uh, there are some misunderstandings that occur out there when people talk about concentrations. And I like the analogy of a match. I can burn my finger with a match, but I can't heat my house with it. Likewise, a high pollutant concentration at some location at a farm, maybe you stick your head in the fan, right? High concentration. Maybe a pit fan, high concentration. That doesn't mean that there's gonna be high exposure for the neighbors. It doesn't. The impact on the neighbor depends on the concentration and the airflow that goes along with it, along with the wind characteristics. Now, when we evaluate odor, we, we measure the concentration. We can measure it in the lab or we can measure it in the field. The intensity, persistence, character, hedonic tone are all other things that we measure because you can't measure the full aspect of odor just by measuring its concentration or the number of times you have to dilute it before you can, you can't smell it anymore. But there's, but if you look at nuisance out in the field, you have to look at the frequency that it occurs. And when it occurs, how long does it, does it occur? And, and it's the part of the FIDO aspect of odor, frequency, intensity, duration and offensiveness. Now, the concentration tapers off with distance from the facility. We had a little fun with this, a deep pit system and I, I, we put our sampling tube really close to the manure, I guess. About as close as we could still without plugging it up, I mean centimeter. And we got hundred and twenty to hundred and thirty parts per million, pretty high. But we drew that tube away from that surface of the manure in the pit and we dropped it by tenfold. And now the air in the barn with it, which is mixed, is only twenty parts per. Now that shows you that the further away you get from the source, the less concentration. Now let's go outside, let's go to a layer facility, it's solid manure, I got the same thing. I got up to a hundred and sixty parts per million, really, really close to the manure and it dropped off quickly as you got away from, down to around twenty. Now, if we look, if we start going outside, uh, you, now I plotted at the manure surface really high, above a hundred parts per million. By the time you exhausted, it's down there, these are logs, it's a log scale, it's not linear. This is around twenty. And you go outside the barn, just go outside the barn, not very far at all, and now it drops another tenfold. And now I put a dash line in there, why's that? Because of the wind. You might be upwind and you might not smell at all. So as you go further and further away, it drops off. And I got these numbers from the Iowa DNR who did downwind measurements of ammonia. And we're talking now point one, it quickly drops off to point one ppm or less. Now, so the distance from neighbors is something that I've been working on for quite a long time. Odor impact, the impact that a neighbor will feel. It depends on the production of the odor, so the more pigs, the more odor. The transport, how it gets there, stable atmosphere, night time, early morning. It transports, stays on the ground, stays close to the ground. And the tolerance, the tolerance of the neighbor. There seems to be less tolerance of a school, hospital, old folks home as compared to someone who lives out in the country. I mean, that's, that's very typical. We see that in all the setback guidelines. The subjective nature of odor, some are not bothered by it as, as much as others. Now excessive setbacks will hinder opportunities though, so there needs to be a balance. And so setback depends on the facility, the size, the shape, the way it's oriented even. The emission rates, uh, the atmosphere, I talked about that. Uh, the, the dense, the building density, how many, are the barns real close together and so on? Uh, wind frequency, exposure angle, like what, what angle difference is it? Three hundred and sixty, three hundred and forty, three hundred and sixty degree winds that will go across the farm and onto my, my place? That's the wind frequency angle, wind exposure angle. And then the manure storage, if the manure is stored outside, there's more odor for that same farm than if it was all a deep pit. Trees and topography make a difference, land use, uh, that, that's the tolerance. I mean, is, is it an agricultural zone or is it a city or something in between? And really it's, it's up to you, you know, what your tolerance is. And then the abatement, if there's abatement, see some, some guidelines don't allow some abatement to reduce the setback. And that's what we've, we've tried to introduce. Uh, here's the effect of atmospheric stability. These stability classes, A would be a nice sunny warm day where you could actually see the waviness in the atmosphere above the, above the field. And the concentration's real low at a distance of eight hundred meters away from the farm, real low. But if the, get more and more stable up to a F, which doesn't occur very often, but when it does occur, you're looking at many times more concentration because the, there's no mixing and it's, and it's kind of temperature inversions, cold air stays on the ground. Now the Europeans have setback guidelines, there's one from the UK, there's one from Austria. The Purdue setback model was developed, taped out of Austria, but we did a couple PhDs. We developed, uh, we enhanced and we made this applicable to the United States. And it depends on, you know, this wind rose is an input into the setback model. So we have a different setback depending on what direction you are from the farm. So the neighbors in the north might, might, could, can, may need to be further away than the neighbors in the south because of the wind, the wind, uh, the periodic winds. And it also includes the land use factor, the topography and abatement. It allows you to put abatement factors in there to reduce the setback. It turns out that this setback model is pretty simple, supported by science. It's, it's easy to educate producers and others about, about odor dispersion. And if you use something like this, it minimizes the human emotion factor that sometimes goes into the issue. All right, so this is the online Purdue setback guideline. And I timed myself, it took sixty seconds to calculate a setback guideline. So I'll show you, show you how it did, you know, this little bit. But the results of this show that the setback guidelines for, uh, for, for finishing hogs, uh, depending on the size, it, it increases, the setback increases. And depending on what factors you put in, this setback guideline could give you numbers between this line and this line. So the best and the worst and anything in between depending on the factors. And compare that to say the Iowa setback guidelines. The Iowa setback guidelines has, uh, two guidelines, one for the rural areas and one for the city. And so it's right in line, it's on the lower end. Now Illinois, maybe because they're less tolerant, but they have higher setback, setbacks, but it's still within the results of our model. South Dakota, they have zero tolerance for corporate farms. So you can see that, their setbacks are really large. But they also are dependent on the size of the farm. So anyway, for an eight thousand head finishing site, you just put eight thousand in there. You say that it's a position north-south, your manure is removed more than once a month, et cetera. And then you tell what, where the nearest weather station is. You got a little pop-up menu that says, okay, what's weather station do you wanna use? Doesn't change that much, uh, over geography. So then it, it goes and gets all the weather, the wind rose from that weather station. Then you say, well, what's the land like, uh, what's the tolerance like? And check your inputs and boom, you got your, uh, your, um, your setback. So for this eight thousand head finishing facility, the direct, you know, the setbacks are right here. They range from about thirteen, eighteen to fifteen, twelve depending on which direction. And that's all based on the wind, uh, wind rose. Here's a thousand finishing hogs, Evansville, Indiana. And the setback turns out to be about four, about five hundred feet depending on direction. And there it is, it's right around, around here. All the homes are, are outside the setbacks, so we're good. The property, the property line is right here. And here's our one-half mile circle and here's our one-mile circle. Now if we increase that to sixteen thousand hogs, setback guideline says you gotta be a little further away. And the setback is around two thousand, twenty-three hundred feet. And now some of these homes are inside the setback, so we could have an issue. Now Minnesota has developed a setback guideline, but it's a little different. And I, I don't like it because it doesn't consider wind direction. It considers that the wind is always blowing toward the farm, toward the neighbor. And so, but they have, the nice thing about this, when they, they did do some nice things, they, they showed a percentage odor free. So it says for this eighteen thousand turkeys, they include turkeys in their setback model, that if you want a, you know, for agriculture it's about ninety-four percent. If you want ninety-four percent odor free, you only need to be about two hundred fifty feet away. But if you want ninety-nine percent odor free, you'd have to be about fourteen hundred feet away. So that's kinda, it's kinda where you get your different values. And here's an example, uh, is it actually a real example from quite, from quite a few years ago. Sixteen houses near a town, sixteen broiler houses near a town. And these were actual locations of the homes. And here's the facility and the setback guidelines surrounded a lot of these homes. So Purdue setback model in conclusion, it's relatively simple. Uh, I guess I went through all those already. So now that is it. I don't know how I did for time, maybe too long, but if you have any questions that we'd like to answer.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that, that information. It's probably a lot for us to digest in very specific way. I mean, uh, we've, uh, we've had these similar figures, you know, that were brought to it using your report and stuff. I mean, it, uh, I mean, in your phrase in there that they pulled the data, but it was misrepresented.
Yes. They, they misrepresented it, they didn't understand it or something. They, I mean, I, I don't know what, what, what happened there, but it was a total surprise to me. I didn't even know they were trying to write this report. But the thing about the names data, when we submit it to EPA, it is public data. And in fact, my colleague in, uh, you know, Louisiana State University could grab that data and publish your article. But most of my colleagues have more ethics than that. They would let me have a chance to publish it first since I collected it. Uh, another unfortunate thing happened when we first started the study. I, I went to Washington, presented a, made a presentation, I just made a mention, there was a reporter there. I made a mention that we had submitted a set of data. That was, that reporter and her company had, her firm had FOIA'd for that, all that information, all, all the faxes, emails, et cetera. They, they wanted that data. They took that data and they published it in their own way. So things like that happen. And, uh, so there are, this is one of the most controversial, uh, air quality studies ever conducted. And, and so there's a lot of people interested in it. And, uh, and, and those who want to criticize the study or, uh, I don't think they necessarily wanted to get credit for, for the publication. It wasn't a journal publication, it wasn't peer reviewed, it was just put together by this organization. But that report that you received at the last meeting was done by an environmental group and they, they were, they were not, they were not happy about the air consent agreement. They criticized having that agreement. And when they looked at the study, they looked for every reason to discredit the study. And so that's why they tried to pick, pick apart. They saw some negative values and they thought that was junk science. They saw, they, they wanted to, uh, they thought the ambient concentrations were, were what the neighbors were experiencing and that wasn't true at all. So, and the exhaust concentration, they thought that's what was inside the barns where the birds were and the animals. So, um, with, a few questions could have been answered, I could have straightened them out, but see, I'm not sure how interested they were in the facts. I don't know, I haven't been able to talk to them. I, I would like to ask them. But, uh, I, I guess one of my motives here today is to try to set you straight is because you, you, you were presented that, the results of that report, which Purdue had nothing to do with. But Purdue's name was put on it and they had nothing to do with it.
All right, all right. Can you kinda give us guidance, of course, we're trying to work with setback language. And we've actually gone back now to, uh, we're looking at farms that are below that permitted level, you know, with the state where they're, you know, they're, they're not at permits level. And of course, I D M permit is four hundred foot setback. For one, uh, would you, uh, make a comment of what the four hundred foot setback with I D M and the science of that?
Well, I, I'm an air quality person, but I, I know that the four hundred foot setback doesn't have anything to do with odor. It is more of a water quality and safe distance from the manure facilities and so on. So that's where it is.
So, uh, taking into effect, if you were looking at an odor or a setback for residents for nuisance, and of course everybody has a different level of nuisance in that, how would you recommend a group to draft language according to that to use as a guideline to account?
Well, I, I alluded to that, to that in my, uh, presentation, the things that I would like to raise, raise your attention to is I, I would recommend that you don't use one number for every farm, no matter what's there. I, I saw a language in there that a CAFO must be thirty-nine hundred and sixty feet away from the school. That doesn't matter what kind of facility it is, it doesn't matter how big it is. If it's just above one cow more than the definition for CAFO, that's what I mean by unfairness. Uh, it doesn't make sense to me. So, or if that, if that operation has spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on biofilters to reduce the odor coming out of the reduce the odor coming out of their facility, and putting nice trees around and so on, they get no credit for it. So what I would suggest, and I know that rules need to be simple, otherwise, if they're too cumbersome, you can't use them. But I would hope that some science can be put into it. One aspect of science is that the bigger the farm, the further the distance. Likewise, the smaller the farm, the smaller the distance. And that's science. Now, we use a number, a square root function, yeah, maybe it's not a square root, maybe it's point-two-three, or maybe it's not exactly right, but it's got some science involved. It's better than just using a single number. And then, including, now, what Randolph County did was, they used my model, and they were hesitant to use the model itself to come up with seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-point-two feet for this farm. They broke it out into small, medium, and large farms. So if it had more than twelve-hundred nano units, then this is the setback. If you're twelve-hundred and eight-hundred, then it's this setback. So they used the model to calculate three different categories. But as you can see, the state did the same thing, that they have, it goes like this, right? The setback distance. My model would not be a stair step, it would be a continuous number. But if the model could also include some provision for abatement, so that if I was a producer, and I want to put a large farm a quarter-mile from the nearest neighbor, but the setback is a little more than a quarter-mile, maybe it's point-three miles, and so, if there wasn't any provision, I couldn't do anything about it. But if there was a provision for abatement, if I could do such-and-such around my farm, or on my farm, change the design of my buildings, like Buckeye Egg Farm had to do, they had to change from high-rise to belt battery. If I could say, well, let me build a belt battery, then can I have a lower setback? See if your setback guideline would allow for that, that would be great.
I know this is not your problem, but we had addressed a lot of the remarks and stuff, that that was a hard one for us to enforce, as far as putting a permit out. That they were going to put in the biofilters with the trees around. I mean, after they got the permit in there, how did you go in there to enforce to make sure that that actually happened?
Well, that is an issue, and I think it's a real issue. Because biofilters need to be kept moist, and they need to be maintained, and it's an end-of-pipe solution, so it's not even helping the indoor air quality, so producers would be tempted to just out of sight, out of mind type of thing, it's not helping my pigs, so let's not worry about it. But, on the other hand, there are pig, hog producers, pork producers that are really conscientious of that, and are, they're putting the biofilters without any requirement at all, just because they want to do it, they want to be good managers. So I guess you have everyone in between. And I guess I'm not, I'm not an enforcement specialist, but I would say that some things would be easier than others to enforce. For example, trees would be easy to enforce, I would think. Or injection of manure would be easier to enforce, much easier, I would think. So, diet modification would be very difficult, you know? We want you to put a little bit less protein in your feed, how would you enforce that? Very difficult. So, I think that's an issue. Maybe some balance could be struck in the ordinance for that. Maybe you leave out certain things that you can enforce.
I think you took a lot of common sense things in here and made it very scientific with numbers, you know, especially having exhaust fans located at different places in the buildings, you know, so that it's not such a nuisance watching out for wind directions, you know, as far as placement. I also saw that you had in there several maps, you know, with the half-mile and wild circles. And we've been trying to implement, you know, certain degrees of that as far as putting some, or looking at what the impact of setbacks would have. And one of the proposals that we had seen dealt with population densities within that half-mile radius of those confined feeding operations. Have you had any dealings or responses with population densities with certain parameters like that?
Yes, the Minnesota offset program has a table in there, and they have their recommended percent odor free, depending on density. So if there are five neighbors or more within that setback, or affected by that setback, then you have to use ninety-four percent. You know, if there's only one, there's a gradation based on population density. And we've adopted that in our Purdue odor model to guide you as to what to use for a land use and tolerance. So, a city is one point oh, and purely agriculture is point-five, and then we have point-six, point-seven, point-eight, point-nine. Just like the state setbacks out of Illinois, South Dakota, and Iowa, they always just double the setback if you're near a town. So, it's already point-five to one, and so we're using the same thing. That's very, very common, to just double the setback for town. And then you may have, like where you have just a, it's not a town, it's not rural agriculture, but you have some, you know, a cluster of houses, that might be different. Or some public facility, it'll all be different.
Can we, will you find your parts out?
I can make this available, in fact, you already have the presentation. And also, I can also give you a link to the interactive setback guideline. I think that the biggest thing that would prevent a county from adopting the setback guideline was having to go look for the wind data. And that would, but I've already got it in there, so all you have to do is select the nearest weather station. You know you're closest to Columbus, Columbus has one, Evansville, you can just click which I'm one of your closest to. And then the most time-consuming aspect is done, and literally, I can, you know, I know what I'm entering, but sixty seconds is all I need to calculate the setback. So, my thought at one time was that a county might just adopt that model, and say, you got to enter your information, and whatever that model gives you is your setback. But, I don't know if you want to go that far, but, because there's requirements, you know, I'd have to keep it maintained, and so on. Or, it's interactive, but it also can be just calculated by hand as well. So you wouldn't be totally dependent on that. It could be calculated by hand, if you had to.
Question, what was the website where the IDEM interactive thing was?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, if I told you, it might be one word off. So I'll have to get that to you later.
It was in one of the slides.
Yeah, it was in the slides.
It's airquality.com.
The airquality.com domain, it doesn't work anymore, so it's a longer URL.
I've got engineering at Purdue, period edu, backslash swiggling line odor, backslash dairy, backslash index. I can't find anything that has the poultry on it. I do have an internet connection.
Okay, well, if I could sit down and look for it after the meeting, I could find it for you.
Okay.
All right, plan commission, I mean, utilize this resource well. I mean, for one, I do appreciate Al to bring this up, you know, and clarify some things. As we're receiving information, we're trying to develop talents, you know, here, and that's a, would that completion be anything like that?
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. If not, we're going to move on to Carrie. And I want to relate to the crowd. Usually, we're taking a little bit different format than usual here, because we're wanting to have the plan commission to be able to talk through this process, and to, so we're going to hold much of the public comment out until at the very last to make a comment. So, that way we can be productive with the people we've got here, and utilize the information from us. All right, Carrie, are we counting up on board?
Yep, just take us a minute.
All right.
It would be the exact opposite. I'm assuming you're going to want to start with the draft itself?
Yes, dear. If you can, I mean, this is basically the ordinance that we're working with right now. If you can, you might have to readjust yourself as far as the seat.
I didn't bring paper copies this time, since we had them out in time.
Well, you've sent it to us in format by email, haven't you?
I don't, well, that's the thing, I remember I had sent it to Tom, because he'd given me that piece of paper, and that night, there were so many extra copies, and I apologize. But, I'll blame you.
All right.
That's all you needed to know, I blamed you.
All right. Does anyone want to start with the presentation?
Honestly, you know, I'm not sure how you want me to go about it. Essentially, we have finished everything up, we've got the general information section. I mean, how do you, how would you like for me to proceed, David?
Well, if I could finish, one of the things that's happened over time, was for those of us who weren't a part of the process, is we did start with a kind of a point system, and then as the subcommittee met, and decided, just a little behind, maybe the committee could address that, and then kind of give a background on the history, and then we're going to go over the ordinance and start addressing specific things. I've got a copy where I went through medicine notes.
Bring your mic over there, okay?
So I don't know who all here participated.
Well, you know, when we lost the point system, you know, in the process, I think we lost one key aspect, I think that that line intention, or I'll speak from that, was that helping side.
Thank you, I'll put it in right now.
Because right now, the way we are, the way we are right now, we've got setback language, and I apologize, I have a paper in front of me right now, because I just did mine to Alan, was that...
Are you talking about the point system?
Yeah.
I can pull it up.
And that, you know, it dealt with a lot of different parameters for density, and we looked at densities in a half-mile. And, you know, whenever we implemented where we're at right now, our setback language is four-hundred feet from residents, two-hundred feet from center of roadway, and two-hundred feet from a property line. And it has no bearing at all as far as, you know, helping developing side placement. And I think that one thing that we had in that side placement is that the intentions were, the denser the population was, the presence of setbacks would be...
The denser the population of the neighbors.
Yes. And in the process of doing that, the more heavily populated areas would have a lot larger setback, you know, parameters that would have to be entailed that might not accommodate a good site location for a animal operation. And when we took that language out there, we lost all of that. So that is a concern of mine. And understanding that what language we had in there particularly, was, had dealt with the point system, was trying to get a total amount of points. But I engage, I liked the concept at the time, you know, the more densely populated areas, the harder it was going to be able to put placement of a facility, you know. For one, a ag district with a very minimum amount of population density within a half-mile would be a good side placement for a poultry house, confined feeding operation of hogs, cattle, or whatever. But one, it's really close to a subdivision, and we'd have a larger density of population, it would be quite a bit harder to get a deployment to be able to put that facility. That's just my remarks. And understanding, I think the median that we had for the county was seventeen and a half, or seventeen point eight?
Eighteen point nine. Actually, what I have pulled up here was the, what's pulled up right now was the last discussed point system, the last discussed scoring system before it got scrapped. And you can see on here, the clean record award, which the definitions were in there, but essentially is, if you'd operated a certain amount of time and didn't have any violations with the EPA, the county, or IDEM, then you got ten points for having that. The existing land use, you were encouraged to not take tillable, you know, we were trying to encourage tillable land preservation, so that's why those points were there. This is the section density concept that he's talking about, so if there's zero to five homes within an hour, or within an hour. Oh, nice. That's about right, yeah. Within a mile of the facility, then you got more points for less houses. And the county average is eighteen point nine. I got that number off of the, and honestly, the number could be a little skewed, because I used the data from the GIS system that the county uses. We had that discussion last time, where every place that has an address shows up as a residence. So, there are some places, for example, if you have a, like, in my farm, we have a grain farm, but the farm has an address, and our house has an address, so there would be two dots for us. So there may be, you know, that may be a little on the high side, but not by much, probably with plus or minus two percent. And then, the next concept is, the further you are away from a house, public use facility or church, than the setback, you also got more points. So if the setback was three hundred, and you were an additional two-hundred and fifty feet, you got forty points. If you were an additional thousand feet, you got more. You got points taken away if you'd had a violation, you got points if you live, if your house was the closest one to the buildings, you got a lot of points for that, actually. And the development of an emergency management plan. At this time, we also were contemplating the verification of water, and this is where we kind of got into the idea of, not necessarily that a water company had to prove, had to sign something saying that they would provide you a water, just that they had the capability of providing you water. And I do believe at one point, we talked about, yes, it's actually, that's the next line on there, if you have two water sources, so let's say that you have a functioning well there, but you can also get on rural water, and you plan on buying water, if you had that backup, that got you points. And I'm actually wrong, because in the very last one, this neighbor notification was removed, if I remember right, is that right, Danielle? It's very close to, there were a few tweaks after this, but not many. At this time, the concept was, with, especially with the smaller farms, they may not have had to have noticed all their neighbors, and if you had done that notice, you know, if you were under the IDEM threshold, you would not have had to have reported to anyone that you were building. And under this, if you had done that... And under this, if you had done that, then you could have gotten an additional hundred points. Again, that was the, that was another thing that was struck a little later and then the whole shebang, but that way they kind of have an idea of...
Right.
We didn't have hardly, there were very few hard and fast setbacks. There were very few, you know, like, right now, it's 3,960 feet from a school, it's 400 feet from a residence, it's 200 feet from a road, 200 feet from a property line. Under this scenario that I'm showing you here, the rules were much more flexible because you had to get the points in order, there weren't as many setbacks because you had to meet a minimum point range. Is that, that's how it happened?
And basically, the, the result of that system was setback wouldn't be less than 400, if I'm correct. It would be possibly more if you did fall within a certain point range.
Well, you just wouldn't, you had to be at least, and I think it was 400 feet from a residence, and then, but the property line and the, um, road were different. I don't remember. Yeah. But then, the whole concept was either you made it or you didn't. And you could, you know, I'll call it, you could buy points by making sure you built it next to your house. You could, um, you know, ensure that you drilled a well and had, uh, rural water. You could, you know, there were things that you could do to increase your chances. And there was a range, um, kind of the small print down there, and the points were, you know, we didn't have all that fleshed out before it got destroyed and was that, um... So if you were in the district, if you were in a rural district and you could get a certain level of points, which is a high threshold, then you and Travis, that down at the planning office, you went through it, you both decided you had the, you were both right on the point system. And if you met that point, then he wrote you a building permit right there and you went on down the road. If you were not quite at that level, but you weren't at the very bottom, then you could request a hearing and the board could talk about it. And let's say, for example, um, you were fifty points away, but there was a reason, you were, you know, you had some extenuating circumstance. Like, uh, you know, Dr. Heber discussed that, you know, if you were, feel surrounded on woods on three sides and it was your family that lived on the downwind side, you know, maybe that was something you might be able to come to the board to talk about. But if you were way below, you didn't even get to come talk to the board, why waste their time? So that's kind of, that's where it was.
And some of these factors that went into point system had to do with odor abatement and some didn't. Some, like a water source, were just attacks on the local resources.
Yes. Well, um, honestly, a lot of this was driven, you know, Adam had made the comment about, and you discussed it, not having unenforceable things, you know, you guys...
If it's not in place at the time of the permit, we're not going to consider it.
Exactly.
So things like the planning of green barriers.
And that's why that concept of if there, if there happened to be trees there that could help you, that's something that you could come to the board and talk about. But we couldn't put it in here because then it's not fair to somebody who's willing to plant a six-foot barrier, you know, a six-foot tall tree barrier around. So there was very little direct odor abatement outside of the section density number.
Well, I'm not gonna get all of this right, but we ended up at the fixed set points because we needed to implement something that could be passed.
Yes.
And we chose to go basically following the state IDEM guidelines.
Exactly.
With a few things added, such as the 200-foot from a property line. There was a lot of discussion about that.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a considerable concern to a lot of people, as well as the 200-foot from the center of a county road trying to force adequate turnaround facilities in front of a barn. But, you know, I said, I don't have all the answers, but that's how we ended up here.
Yeah, I don't want, I, and I hope that it didn't come across, I, I really did like the point system. And I, to be fair, I put a lot of work into it. And so within twenty minutes, you know, fourteen pages of work was just like shredded. So that's what maybe came across in my voice. But the main reason it got that, the main reason we went there is exactly right, Lane. I think the committee felt easier was just that. You know, this is a baby step. This doesn't mean you can't go there, doesn't mean you can't add that in later, but right now, the realities of the county, in order to make sure it's something that's passable, that's what I heard from the board.
This is a considerable improvement over what we have now.
Exactly. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Let's go, then go to seven point one three.
It's not big enough, is it? It was better the other way, right?
Pro plus, babe.
Huh?
Pro plus.
I've got a bit of draft. Seven point one, that's developmental standards.
In the full screen view, it won't work. I thought it would be better to not have the ruler up there, but it's not.
Developmental standards?
Yeah, hang on just a second, I'm trying to make it big enough for everybody to read.
All right.
Seven point one point two.
All right, well, I've got an old, uh, older draft.
You want developmental standards, is that what you want?
There it is.
Yep.
All right. Here's our current, that's the current draft ordinance setbacks.
Yep. It has not changed from last meeting when we discussed it. There's been no substantive changes to this since last month.
I would like to interject something right there. If you go with that standard, you're gonna get tall in the court, somebody is. It's gonna cause problems. The best present, uh, program presented tonight, goes one per presenter. The professor presented was the, was what the, the rule they go by in Minnesota. That makes more sense to me than anyone that presented. And I think more people here agree with that, too. David?
Commission, uh, what are your thoughts on this? I mean, we've seen a scientific model as far as developing standards. And I know that we're trying to develop things that are basically written in our, by the body in law, which is the 400-foot setbacks with by him. I mean, uh, I, uh, we currently in the ordinance right now with permitted farms have 750 setbacks in language. And those are for permitted farms, and we got several of those farms, those farms that are abiding by that in it. So what's your thoughts here? This language here, I mean, if we're just looking for setback periods, so you can throw a tech measure out there and run with it, then this is, you know, in some of these numbers that we make adjustments for, they work. But is that what we're looking for? Is that what you want to start with? You know, those are the top discussions. And I think Lane gave the very good analogy of how we got there as far as being something that was palpable, you know, to be passed. Thoughts?
The, this, I mean, I've caught everything the professor says, but is, is that system that, that you showed, does that maintain and usable by any state entity?
Yes, yes, it is. I, I, I got, uh, there's another beta version that, that will go up within about two or three months that will now include layers. Right now, what's on the internet, we just looked at, includes Gary's form.
You know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to leaving this language as it's written, but adding another line that says something along the lines of evaluated with that system and whichever is, uh, whatever the minimum, whichever one generates the minimum distance or the maximum, however we want to word it. Something like that, evaluated both ways.
Well, from a legal standpoint, regulations need to be, um, by an ascertainable standard. And if we rely upon a known discredit intended or purview for Professor Heber or, or anyone, but if we, if we draft an ordinance that relies upon, um, a formula and a website that we don't maintain and don't control, I, I worry that it would be challengeable as not being a written in as an ascertainable standard. It would have the specifics, the formula that goes into that would have to be drafted in. Because we could just refer to a website, so-and-so, and, and, you know, do your numbers. I don't think we could probably do that.
So, so you would have to draft the formula?
We basically have to, and which would take us back to all the varied, the point system we could put in. And so, while Lane's suggesting, really, if we could do, you know, an either-or, we could resurrect, you know. Basically, what I hear you saying is you'd like to see, okay, it's gonna be the maximum or minimum of this straight setback or whichever yield is the greatest or least or whatever your, your level may be. But I don't, I don't think we could incorporate my reference, um, or it would be advisable to, I mean, the challenge will, something that's maintained somewhere else. We have to have the ascertainable standard from any ordinance, so...
Well, I, if my, is my opinion sought on that, is that...
Oh, yes, please.
There's, and again, the data is, the data in the model, I actually use it a lot. Um, it's, it's amazing tool. It is not, again, no, please, no disrespect, but it is not a regulatory tool. I mean, I think it has a place in decision-making, but there's a, let's say, for example, we write it in and you don't, if you got the wrong data set, you know, if our best, if we're using a data set from who knows when and they're using a data, I, there's a, a lot that could go wrong with that complex of a model. You know, the, yes, there needs to be science behind the numbers, yes, there has to be some, you know, some basis for it, but at the end of the day, a zoning code is a political thing. And it's also, yeah, you need to have as much science as you can, but you've also got, everybody's gotta know where the line's at. And I don't think you could ever find a line with that style of data input. I mean, if, if they use a, oh, the, even if it is the same year, what if they use a different weather station? They can't, I mean, there's just a lot that could go wrong.
You, you, the last meeting had a, you didn't have a picture, we couldn't show it, of a distance.
Mm-hmm.
You didn't have that?
I do, I do. It'll take me a minute to pull it up because it's a lot for my little machine here.
All right.
While she's doing that, again, this is my second meeting, okay? But, yeah. But anyway, this point system sounded to me like a deal. I don't understand what was wrong with it. I mean, I, I know you had variables, but I, I'm not seeing in our county, you're drafting. We're not like Illinois where everything's flat, or even Campbellburg. When we got Southern Indiana, or the Southern part of the county, is hell and roller. I don't see that we can actually set up, I may be wrong here, but from what you're showing there, you take the southern half, which is trees and, and hills, and the western part, which is flat. How can we set up the same standards for the southern half as the eastern half or the northern half or the western half?
That's too many halves for a whole.
Do what?
You gotta lower your...
I know we got it, I know we got it, but I'm just asking. Well, I mean, I don't see a uniform 55 mile an hour in our whole county.
Let me, let me take a stab at that. If there's none of those hills or trees happens to be between the most operation of the neighbor, it largely won't matter. And I think, to summarize what Lane said, not that I agree or disagree, I think it just came down to, and, and...
Yeah.
Deference being shown, having lived through the process and sat through the meetings and, and, and heard the commentary and fielded the calls, that I think ultimately it was, okay, we're here for a purpose. We, we wanna get something better than what we've got now. And ultimately, a, a, an assessment was made, I think, that maybe if we just go to a simple, straight setback system that mirrors what, uh, the IDEM has just implemented July first of this year from, from neighbor, neighboring residences, that maybe that's something that we can at least get in place and apply it to lower, uh, densities of operations. You know, so non-permitted hog operations and cattle and, and whatever operations are gonna be, uh, you know, have the same IDEM setbacks applied to them, even if they're not IDEM regulated, which was the 400-foot residence setback. And also the 200-foot, I think we proposed, kind of when we were discussing the possibility of reciprocal setback. We put that in as from the property line, that would at least keep someone private and minimize the IDEM.
I think reciprocal setbacks is probably what killed the point system. That's a long way to get there, but...
And, and I didn't participate, and with that said, well, I didn't participate in the subcommittee, but I came to the meetings and was kind of surprised at where we're going and heard Scott about it and heard the comments at the meetings. And, um, I really think, no, no decision was made that that was a better system. I think it was just what's, what can we pass and what's palpable.
Well, I know, and everything I've ever dealt with, a lot of things you have to do, you're forced on by rules and regulations that shouldn't apply to your application because you're in a different setting. Jim, you've got a farm right there on the west, and a farm on the south. But both of them aren't growing the same, even on their farms. And that's what I'm saying. And I'm not trying to throw a pile in here, I'm just trying to understand. Well, I'll, it isn't exactly that I disagree, except that I disagree. And I would say, my opinion would be to pass this. Get it implemented and then revisit this. I'm not opposed to a point system in any way. It would be better, absolutely it would be better. But in the interest of getting something on the books that's better than what we have now, I think we need to, to do this. That's my opinion as one member of the commission.
Okay. Thoughts, Jim?
Well, I think, we, most of us were in favor of the point system to start with when it was first started. But after seeing all the comments and, and things about it, the way it was set up, we went the shorter way to get there, to get something started, so we've got something to work on for the future. Because we know it's not a full set deal with it set up now, but it's, it's a, it's a start.
Danielle?
And I came kind of late into this in July, and since our last meeting, I've made my goal to read our entire comprehensive plan. And I guess my concern with what we have now is that it does not necessarily go along with what we have planned for our county. And I was not fault in the comprehensive plan. But I do like the point system. I felt that it was about site placement and trying to keep some of the arguments, some of the, um, disagreement maybe between farmers and landowners separate, or separated. I do understand what we're saying, though, about the ag ordinance, saying that we're trying to come there when, um, it was being placed. The board believes, or the, like, commission believes that the point system will be passed, and I don't know why we wouldn't.
Would you have, do you got any comment?
Whatever is to be decided needs to be workable with the individuals and the, uh, resources we already have. I'd like to yield a lot, my...
I'd like to yield a lot, my opinions, of what Travis would have to think about this. I'd like to hear what he has to say. Of course, this is an advisory thing to the commissioners, they're going to be the ones to have the final decision on.
Before we yield to Travis really quick, I will say, as I think Lane and Jim and Max and I might have been the only ones in those last, you know, those few committee meetings, and at tho, at those committee meetings, and now, I will tell you my opinion, which I'm not being, you know, my opinion at that time and today is that the pub, that from what I heard from the public, was that a point system would not be passed. They would not allow it. That's what I heard, I don't know if that was reality, but it's my belief that it would be very hard to pass a point system.
I wanted to defer to Max Green, because he was on that subcommittee. Would you like to make some remarks?
I believe that the point system had a few problems that still need to be worked out. I mean, before we kind of somewhat of an impasse there a little bit, it was, we still need to bug out whether you can get the points without having to actually consider the neighbors, whether you can get, work, it still needs to work out, but part of the contention, the way I understood it, was that the reciprocal setback was tied to the point system, that's what, that was hard to explain, and the reciprocal wasn't going to fly.
Yeah, it didn't have to be.
What the board had decided, we can't do that, because that's not fair to the neighbors. And if that was the, if the point system was going to be tied to some type of that, that it couldn't fly without it, then it wasn't going to fly at all. But I mean, with the reciprocal gone, I think there's a possibility for a point system to be looked at, but it, that's not the way it was.
Yeah, it didn't have to be, but it was. Is that a fair statement?
It may be impossible to relook at it, and put enough weight on the neighbors' concerns, or the population density, to make it goable with the reciprocal, but that's what killed the point system, in my opinion.
Let's go back to the, the mark in there. Al, would you be able to help us out? Minnesota kind of adopted a program in there to talk about small, medium, and large farms, is this correct, or is it?
And that was Randolph County.
That was Randolph County.
Yeah, what they did was that, they also felt like you did, and they didn't want to have to go to a website, or find my model, or worry about maintenance of the program. They used the program to develop their table, a simple table. And they, it was very simple, in other words, they have three classes of sizes. Small, small medium, and large.
This is Randolph County? How about that?
It'll take me a minute to find it, but.
All right. I think it's worth looking at. Let's see what it says. Everybody has a different definition of what a small farm is, what a medium farm is, or a large farm is.
Guarantee you.
That's almost political right there.
That's right. Guarantee you.
If I'm in a certain part of my relatives, I'm tolerant. But they don't give a speech, and that's not true.
Al, do you know if they, did they put that in the intensive ag zone? Is that where that table would be?
I'm not sure, you might search for Purdue, or search for.
Is it the business? Wouldn't you want to get signed in?
I don't even see that there it is.
Yeah, what we did is, we just followed the I-DEN setback. That's all we did, for simplicity, we followed it.
Is that what you're saying, four hundred feet?
Yeah.
Minnesota, Larry, can you help me out with your remark in there, talking about Minnesota, and Al, maybe help me out, what's Minnesota?
Yeah, they, in there, you know, they showed about three different states he did there.
Yeah.
But you see, he, they was doing a kind of stair step deal there, it was, and how long have they had this system? You know, we need to, and how much trouble they've come up, you know, that's what we need to know, with this system that you showed there, Minnesota, you know, let's all face it here, the people that put up a four hundred foot setback from a confinement chicken house, hog house, or turkey house, they ain't never lived with one. Them characters should made that four hundred foot law, living in Indianapolis. Let's get real here. Because I've lived in the country.
Can you go back to the facts here, that you're trying to relate to Minnesota?
Yeah, in other words, what I'm saying is, if these people in Minnesota's used this for, planned for three to five years, and it's, and they got a lot of agreement on it and everything, there's no reason why you can't put that in black and white in your rulebook and use it. And I'm like the, Mr. Cypher says, you can put this on a website or something, and that don't make it legal, it has to be on black and white. And that's what you need to do. And the reason I, you're, you're giving everybody a chance there, and when they're going to come out with this four hundred rule, and I don't know how long it's been, there's somebody going to get sued, and it's going to be the county commissioners, it's going to be the planning commissioners, and a people, a bunch of people, that built these chicken houses, and some of them may have to tear them down, or stop production in them. Because kind of, we got lawyers in this country, they're ready to take on anything.
I'm just trying to get back to your, what your comment was, Minnesota, so we could utilize them to use it for reference, and take a look at, between Randolph County, and I thought there was something that energized your thought process with Minnesota.
Yeah, well, it's because it was a, they was using the size farms, and they'd use the distance, and the towns, and taking, and they had a standard, let me like, for everybody in the whole state. And we can't take, we need to make a rules in this county, and if we find somebody agrees with, everybody agrees with it, like that, if that works, and we've got it, and you can put it in black and white, you can read it and make sense out of it, you're going to need to go with it.
All right. You have, are you having any luck there, Kerry?
Well, honestly, it's not as simple as the table.
Okay.
Um.
You're talking about animal units.
Yeah, um.
Do you determine how big your farm is?
Well, and then there is, um.
Well, while she's, while she's looking.
Travis, do you have any thoughts about this process? No pressure, Travis.
There it is.
Yeah.
Point system versus solid setback. I would just go with God, or now.
This is Randolph County, so essentially, the first one is that, essentially thirteen hundred and twenty feet from the property line, upon which the, if a public gathering place, I can't even read through that quickly enough to get what they're arguing at there to.
That, but, no confinement operation, a lot would be cited within one mile of a town.
Yeah.
The next one is, there's actually four sizes. Three hundred and forty to five hundred and nineteen animal units, eight hundred and seventy feet. Five twenty to six ninety-nine, a thousand feet. Seven hundred, fourteen hundred animal units, fifteen hundred feet. Over fourteen hundred and one animal units, two thousand feet. And that, that's it, but then there's some other ones for specific, open group, another setback for that.
There's, and then there's finishes and gills, how to use that, but there is a lot, a lot of other, this is part of the reason, in addition to Al's part, the small, medium, and large, there's about two pages of additional setbacks and limitations, and that's part of the reason why, when I went through Randolph Counties, and I'm looking at a county that has no zoning, I wasn't, when I saw a three-page ag district, I moved on. I mean, I thought, you know, that's part of the reason why I didn't even.
See, my, my model has worked with livers, or silage pens, maybe some of those things, but those, and there are actually four sizes, not three, but it is their stuff.
Right, and that makes sense, those four or five makes sense, yeah.
And they developed those based on the model.
Okay, that's great, yeah.
All right. You know, I, I don't know where to go with this, you know, as far as the discussion. Is there other parts, I don't want to get just totally thrown up on that, but I do think it's important, and there, I think we've got the, some other things in here to, is there anything else in this ordinance that you think that we need to be addressing? I think the map that she's got right there shows the incorporated towns.
Yes, these are the incorporated towns, that would be theoretically, they are, they're affected by the ordinance, if they have not drafted their own zoning for their own incorporation, you know, incorporated limits. And I think Travis and I probably need to get together one more time to make sure that if there is zoning in one of those towns, they, he didn't think that Livonia had taken the two-mile fringe that we talked about so far, so that's why they're not in there, but because they have their own ordinance for their own town, they're not, so the red striped areas are areas that this ordinance does not affect. That's the two-mile fringe around Salem and Livonia. The green areas are the incorporated towns that would be considered the R-one district in this ordinance. And everything else is the ag district. So this is, essentially, this is the zoning map. And I've got every, I've got everything else turned off, that I think we were kind of wanting to see in terms of setbacks and things like that, but this is the basic of what we're talking about.
There are two green areas shown as R-ones, but they are not incorporated now.
They show up as incorporated towns on the GIS layer provided to me by WTH. So if that is not correct, that's a data layer.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't bother, doesn't bother the map to call it as a, as an R-one district, if we want to call it as an R-one district.
Exactly, exactly. The only, and that's what, the only reason that it's on there is because it was straight from the data provided from WTH. And the, I'll be truthful, the boundaries seemed off to me, when you look at a aerial photo behind it, the boundaries are not very consistent with the town, but that's the data that was provided, so.
Is there something else that you can pull from that, that is, the red dots and the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to start here as a basic.
Okay.
This is, the blue dots that I just laid in are, were the addresses that we talked about. So this would have every address that's ever been given, essentially. I kept them small, because here in a minute, we'll overlay some things into them. This is the current ordinance, so everywhere that's red, you cannot build a farm. And to give you an idea, I'm going to zoom in a little bit on certain areas.
That's the seven fifty?
This is the seven fifty, so. If we zoom in here, you can see the seven fifty, it's really relatively restrictive. It'd be hard to place a barn in.
Excuse me, but every circle is seven hundred and fifty feet?
Around a residence, yep. And then, and it's around the dot of the residence, it's probably not exactly accurate, because it's from the wall of the building, you know, things like that, but it's close enough for right now, yeah. This is the four hundred foot minimum that we're proposing. Is there another number you want to see? I didn't lay in the schools, because the, with just the three, I could probably pull them, it'd take a few minutes, but we can pull them and see them.
Yeah, I don't think that's so necessary, I think that most of, you know, this is where we're at, those are big primary locations, you know. Let me, let me, let me throw this one out to you. No, 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 this is very far.
That's the four hundred, of the whole county.
We got four hundred, we got seven fifty, you know, that our figure's in there. Is there some way that we can come up with some type of, you know, as population density to, you know, of course, like I know, the size of the farm has a lot to do with the impact, as far as with the residents. Now, what I was thinking was trying to develop something from a four hundred to seven fifty, you know, in parameters of density. You know, to increase to seven fifty on the, you know, on the density. Hot? My information?
So it's basically a one factor point system, or it's a modified point system?
Right.
We have some variation of it.
You want to see the seven fifty again?
One of the things I want to point out is, between the four hundred and seven fifty, we're done. I've never provided my opinion, I'm not sure there's a great difference between, in the white space. But what I do, what I will tell you is, I think it really comes down to parcels. Because what, what really matters, what's really going to give us fits, is when someone's got a fifteen acre parcel, or a ten acre parcel, or whatever, next to, you know, next to someone with that, a parcel with a house on it, or residence on it, basically what you've got is, does that three hundred and fifty swing between four hundred and seven fifty alter their ability to use their land? Because if they can still use their land, I don't think you might feel that upset, probably, or you, it's going to be a marginal.
The two hundred foot property line will cause a bigger problem across the board than the difference between the four hundred and the seven fifty. I, I mean, in a practical manner, seeing what I do across the board, across every county in the state, the two hundred foot property line is a much bigger issue than the four hundred versus seven hundred and fifty foot residence. I mean, if you had to pick between the two, you know, if you only could fix one of those, I would fix the property line, then.
Okay. I'm trying to keep as much, but if you have, specific, as specific.
Specific to this?
Yes, yes.
Has the committee, in the process of looking at this setback, considered the expansion of those operations? For example, I believe the statistics, or some of the other counties, the larger the operations, the greater the distance it has to be. So somebody comes in, they start with a small operation, and they're four hundred feet, and then they double the size, or they triple the size of that operation. What happens? If the, if the plans are to expand, maybe there should be a larger setback.
I guess my, my conclusion would be, if they expand into a larger operation, then their, their setbacks would be inconclusive to that setback of that larger operation.
Correct, but they start small, so they're, they're four hundred.
I know, but when they expand, they might not be able to expand if they don't have the setback, the work.
Correct, but will people think that far ahead, in these circumstances?
Well, I hope we're trying to.
Not you.
Well, it wouldn't.
I'm talking about the people.
Then they couldn't get the permit. I mean, if we did his modified plan, they couldn't get the county permit. That, I mean, that's the, that's, and that's the way, right now, the, the ordinance is written, and I'll use you, if that's all right, David.
That's fine.
If David, at his farm, right now, if it's adopted, if this ordinance was adopted the way it's written today, David would have one farm, that I know, just because I've been there, I know that it would be a non-conforming use, which means, if he ever wanted to add another structure there, it would have to, the old barns wouldn't have to, but his new structure would have to conform with the rule. And it would be the same thing with, if a farm came in with four hundred, in your example, and they, then ten years later, or five years later, decided they wanted to go to eight hundred, if they couldn't meet the eight hundred rule, they couldn't meet it. The four hundred could stay put, but the eight hundred wouldn't happen, they just wouldn't get the county permit. It's the same sort of thing, it happened, happens a lot in zoning, in terms of when you change things around, there's always, there's always some exception that sits out there as a non-conforming, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. While she's got this map up in there, let's just use an example, throw West Washington out there if you can.
Okay, that's. Okay, that's, it'll just take a minute, if that's all right.
And so we can look at school corporation. Because I know that we brought up what the difference was with the school and stuff, and I, I think Al probably proved. Addressed that to a certain degree. Why the larger setbacks?
I'm looking for it, I may not have it in here.
While she's looking, could Al repeat that for us? Why the larger setbacks?
Why the larger setbacks for a school?
Yes.
Oh, because, uh, the school would have young children and they may be more, uh, you're, you're a more vulnerable population. They're forced to go there. Uh, they have no choice, so... You know, it's the same as true for restaurants or the public, uh, public, park of recreation. Typically, if you look at setback guidelines, they have higher setbacks for those types of zones, churches.
But if you live in your own home, you're forced to go to your own home as well.
So the child at school has more protection than the child at home? That was my question last week.
And I think I was...
I didn't hang the guard, I'm just telling you what...
Oh, just asking what...
Yeah, but, but, but that is what, even in Europe, uh, a city, for example, um, they would, it's almost like a 400 to 750, you're almost doubling it. And then that's what a lot of these setback guidelines do, they double it.
I don't have the school layer on there. Because it's a whole state layer and it's too hard.
And I'll say that it also has to do, as I thought about your question, with the whole concept of, as we were tinkering with population densities out, outside of, you know, how many people are affected and how dense is the population. When you're up against a school, there is a very dense population right there, and you're dealing with a number of people affected within a certain area. And I think that, and the answer lies in there as much as anything, it's the whole concept of, maybe we allow different setbacks, as we were in the point system, we're going to allow different setbacks, or if, if there weren't as many people within a certain, so so many feet, then, then the setback would vary. Well, with a school, you're talking about, you know, in Salem, a thousand kids in, in one building, and I think it goes to just the population density within that striking distance of that...
And I, I imply that there was a health effect, there was a, you know, border, I, I don't think that's it, um, because I, I, I think it's more the tolerance. I, I mean, if, uh, a restaurant owner, their, their business depends on, and their customers are coming in and the smell there.
There's zero tolerance.
And that's what, to me, and that's what the density of population is, it was a tolerance issue, that the greater the population, the more magnified a tolerance issue it is.
All right, Plan Commission, did we get a little long here? I mean, is there anything else in here that you want to look at, or, I mean, we've deliberated, you know, one bit on the setback language, I, I think he is probably the most dramatic figure there. We've had discussion of the point system and where we got to this point, you know, and the reason for the, uh, minimum setbacks that's, uh, proposed in there. Does anybody want to bring anything that they would like to adjust in the current draft in there as a motion for additions, or is there something you would like to subtract out of? Because it is getting nine o'clock, and, uh, I would like to kind of move in a direction, you know, whether we're going to take this, if we're going to take this and, uh, make suggestions for changes, or to work with, working with this and, uh, accepting this to start going into public comments. So if you feel that this document, as it is written right now, is, uh, is enough to go to public comment where you feel, like, even knowing that in public comment, if things come up in that public comment, we can come back and re-draft and go through the process again of public hearing.
No, I think that the work you've done, it's a great starting place. And as far as the public, I think we are, we're through the rough draft. And as long as we can work on it and build to it, take away from it, uh, I think we do need to start. We definitely have to get anything, like Clay said. Um, I've got some questions on this, and this, uh, I need to do some more reading, but I think it's, we're better not to go public to see where we started, how you're changing.
Okay.
I'll just...
All right.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I make a motion that we... I didn't want to. Make a motion that you want to...
Present this as...
As this, as the preliminary draft.
You want to relate how the, how we need to present that?
Uh, yeah.
And, and, and basically what it is, is a draft ordinance out there for public comment, correct?
If we want to have, if we want to pursue the public hearing, so, uh, my comment is going to be, I, I actually did have some follow-up issues, like I would like to discuss either publicly or privately, um, any disregard of the comprehensive plan, because I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed, because I think requires that someone or someone's being consistent. Understanding that we noted it, that, I mean, I think that's something that needs to be pursued, we can't let that drop without further investigation. And then I've got, I did have a couple of questions, and to, to save myself from looking foolish, I did notice publicly things I didn't, things I want to follow up with you on.
Okay, sure.
And then there's a couple... Fair enough. I had a question, things I missed the first time I went out there.
Yeah, no, it probably needs, yeah.
This is a public comment.
Yeah.
All right, Danielle, do you have anything specific in the comprehensive plan?
No, but I can get that together. It was just a general, a lot of it, um, was a general feeling that we were very, um, I'm trying to think how to say it, um... That, that we have an agricultural zone and we have residential zones, but I feel like we still have everything, all land is everything unless it's in that ring. You know what I mean, that? We still consider our agricultural land residential. And how do we identify, or am I right, Carrie, in that, that we don't really have a defined in our ordinance as what agricultural land is? This is basically about confined keeping operations. And that was where I was. And I don't know how to say it exactly right, I need to think.
Well, all those lines, I saw. Um, we, our retention of herb services was very limited, very limited scope, and one of the issues that we talked about addressing in our first zone ordinance, that, you know, as we focused on this, was also, we're going to do something with, um, we're going to save local home parks. And kind of, and I hope that's something that we want to address in our first zoning ordinance, or if we just wanted to do this.
And so that takes that into consideration. This is our first, and we're moving in that direction. The moving in the direction is to get, is to work on agricultural...
That's your handicap to come to that job.
That's not your handicap, yes.
Yeah.
That's where I, where I have some concern.
Okay. I think that, uh, what your concerns are, are an ongoing process to come to that point. Okay? Phil, you still wanted to put your motion out?
Yeah, I, I got one other thing to say. Ralph Perry wrote me a draft tonight. Ralph and I sat on the school board at East Washington, and both went through this. And back in the seventies, our county went through, uh, what they started as zoning process. Ralph and I ended up with a problem in our school system, with an overcrowded school, because the, the taxpayer didn't want anything. And we ended up in a mess down there, a building, I know Larry, uh, we all want it perfect, we all want it fair. But we have to have a starting place on something to protect us all. And we ended up in a building project down there to solve what could have been if we would have negotiated with some type of zoning or ordinance. And this is the next that we don't want the problem, we want to work together with this problem. And that's why this is, I don't feel going to be the final solution, but it is a starting place for us. No one's going to be a hundred percent happy, Ralph and I figured that out. He quit and I'm still here. The gentleman from Tyson is deserved to make a living. The people from Franklin deserve to live here too. We all have to compromise and come up with a solution. And when I say to you, uh, and you, whether 400 feet is the right answer tonight, 2 miles, I don't know. I've got chicken houses around me, I've got hog houses around me. It doesn't bother me, I'm not a farmer. I can't say that I take sides on either side, I'm trying to be as independent middleman as I can. But I want both sides to live together. We've got a great county. We've got a great bunch of people that have put a lot of time into this. A young lady just threw 14 pages away, lost a lot of sleep, and was mad at everybody. But she worked hard. The gentleman from Purdue done a heck of a lot of research on numbers. Again, we have to compile all this, work together, and make our numbers and sizes fit. And we're not all going to be happy, but we're a heck of a lot broader than what Ralph and I was in that school problem. That said enough. I'm not a lawyer.
All right. Are you still got a motion? You going to put a motion to...
I'm going to make a mo, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
Yep. Are, because the, are we, we're wanting to just, uh, open this up for the comment, or in the form of the public hearing, or just, are we still in drafting stage? Public comment is drafting. And we say, before we make the, before we make a motion, I'm going to see, are, are we ready to go ahead and sentence for a public hearing, because that would be...
I, I have my motion.
Are you still wanting to have another month to, to let people look at it, call you up, knock you in, put, and then talk about it one more time?
I think that, as I'm reading in here to adopt a zor, a zoning ordinance, I'm, uh, I think we're down to here. We've, we've done this. The comprehensive plan has been looked at. Current condition and character of the district has been looked at. Most desirable for the use of land in each district. We're about to, got to, uh, the residential and ag district. Conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, I think that's part of our setback link, whether it's the right one or not, has been thought of. Responsible growth and development. Okay? Plan Commission must give notice, you know, of a public hearing, you know, of a document. So if this is the ordinance with the, uh, top work, with the typing errors or grammatical to be put in there, it has to be put in the public place for 10 days for a review, for the first hearing. Then the public can come in and make comment. The public has seen this in different forms up here, but they need to get it in their hands and to take a look at it and be prepared to make public comment. So are we there?
If I, I have two seconds to that.
Yeah.
And I, I will heed to Tom's schedule here, but you have 10 days, it needs to be on notice to the public 10 days prior to the meeting. And I don't, I mean, that's the law, I don't know if that's an adequate amount of time or not, but that's the law. Um, but that doesn't mean that we can't fix typos between now and, I don't know, February 15th or the 20th, and then put those, the grammatical error one...
Those aren't, those aren't so much an issue as...
We can do non-substantive changes. I don't want people to be scared because I put a comma instead of a semicolon. That stuff can be fixed before it goes on public notice.
All right. Senator Phil, make a motion to work with, making this a public document for review?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll say it.
Plan Primer, your second, it's open for discussion. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same, motion carried. We will, this is for review. Al, for the public, and have our first public hearing? You have noticed, Paul?
No, just, I got, I'm thinking, I mean...
Okay.
Well, they're those two days will be good for it.
At least.
And that, yeah. There's, couples have a different requirements, sort of IC 531, I think, that sets out the, the publicate, this, uh, the, the, the public hearing requires, um, publication of those papers, uh, up there, I'm checking up, there's different criteria and different types of events. It also requires that it just be placed, that the notice, it's a publication, indicate to the public where they can view a copy of this. And so I'm going to ask where you guys want me to publish that this can be viewed.
Well, when we did the comprehensive plan, we did the library...
And the auditor's office, maybe?
Auditor's office. I don't know if we did these...
And online.
Indiana proud, you can use it on Indiana.
So that would be two resources. Does the public have any other places that they would like?
What about the post offices?
Uh, all of them.
Yeah.
I, I would hate to ask the, uh, a non-county agency to ho, a federal agency to host a county ordinance for visitation, I...
Well, the county hangs out and stuff in the post office, don't think they don't. Like Sheriff Sales and miscellaneous like that, they're in the county post office.
What about, uh, would the extension office be, or can we do that in the extension?
Yeah.
Extension, library, auditor's office, would that work?
If she, I mean, and if, isn't that your, is Indiana proud, you're...
Yes, yes.
Is that acceptable to put it there? I mean, I don't care, we can publish her a PDF.
Well, a PDF, you could put a PDF and it doesn't matter, you know, you don't have to officially put it in like grocery stores or something like that, but anybody that's interested, you can download it off of there and print it off on your printer, and you can take it anywhere that you need to go.
All right.
Is that acceptable?
I, I, this is my suggestion, library, extension, and auditor's office, and post it all on, put it pretty well, I mean, we could put it on the county website.
Yeah, that's a nice one.
Okay. Put it on Indiana proud, and then also on the county website.
Well, and you've got to connect the community too, so I set up your account so you could actually down, upload it yourself.
All right, okay. All right, now, you understand, Ryan, are we at 10 business days or 10 calendar days?
If I read it, in terms of there, it's the 10 calendar days of your notice and of it being out there, so that's, that's my, I don't have my blue book with me tonight just because I had too much junk packed in there.
Well, what I've got, and you can do 10 business days and be to the 18th of this month if you go business days. And that would precise be a lot more, it'd be 14 days, 15 days of calendar days.
Tom, can you and I get the typos worked out before the 18th?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Do we want to set up a public hearing? I don't know about this, we're, uh...
Can we just do it in our next meeting?
That's what I think.
All right.
Just hoping public hearing in this...
Public hearing in our next meeting?
Yeah.
Our next meeting is March the 4th. That'd be first public hearing, be our regular Plan Commission. All right. Seven o'clock. All right. Anything else from the Plan Commission?
Should I set the public hearing for eight o'clock so we can...
Conduct business at seven?
I guess, I guess it depends on whether we have, uh, we have... I guess, I guess it depends on whether we have, I mean, I can't imagine one of the business group.
Well, let's do, let's conduct our business at seven, seven thirty, public hearing. Okay? All right?
Seven fifteen. Well, I can, I can at least talk about a lot of modifications to make or something.
Yeah. All right. So seven thirty is gonna be public hearing, it's a regular meeting at seven o'clock. Okay? And we'll get that posted out to the papers, and that, so that they know that we're, so we're advertised for a public hearing.
I'd like to thank Dr., is it Eber? Man, his grad assistant, whose name I couldn't pronounce, where's that? For, thank you, for coming tonight, because that was a very informative and helpful, and it was kinda quick, because I know you got a time crunch, and so I could jot a whole lot down and, and follow it real well. But I think, I think it was interesting, and I, I did kinda gather how, you know, where we are in the process, and it looks like we're still waiting on the EPA to address the issues from the study, but, um, as far as what regulations, then they will come in.
All right, thank you for, for taking the trouble to come down here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the, uh, playing commission, do you have anything else you'd like to address? And that, we'll open up, is there anybody specifically in the crowd that would like to make a comment? Yeah, Michael?
The one thing I've, uh, noticed, you guys say you need a starting point, that you just wanna get something passed. I, y'all already have a starting point, it's Idaho-Stanford's. I don't believe that if you can't come up with something to make people happy, which I know we're not gonna make everybody happy, but if you're just gonna tie some for the heck of it, no point passing.
All right, Roger?
Oh, just Connect the Community, I sent you two links. Um, it's a calendar-based thing where you get information directly from the organization, and it goes directly to the internet. So I gave them both to you, both the council commissioners, because you're president of both. And if you need any help in, in starting it, let me know.
Okay. All right, anybody else? I appreciate your time, I appreciate Al coming down, Professor, and, and that, so, Purdue didn't do very well this week, but I'm sure it's like that you brought something to fall. But then, uh, here to take a motion to adjourn, so if I do a second, you're right.